We'll now move into our regular agenda items. We're going to approve our regular agenda for the evening, moving our tentative agenda to a regular agenda, and I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Motion passes six zero. We have no citizens' comments for this evening. Moving into item five on our agenda, our fiscal stability. We have our regular agenda items, our approval of minutes from June the 17th, our Personnel Matters bills, and a chart-wells agreement that's on the consent agenda. And I'll entertain a motion for that. Just for those that are here that are not aware of consent agenda format, we all receive that information well in advance, one to two weeks in advance. Have the opportunity to ask any questions ahead of time on that.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as posted, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say no. Consent agenda items pass six zero. Moving into one of our collaborative connections, we have a resolution for acceptance of gifts. We've been extremely fortunate over the last year to have many partners in the community that are extremely generous, and we were fortunate enough to have a little reception, meet and greet for them in June. It was quite well attended. And starting off our July for 24-25, in good fashion, we have $50,000 worth of in-kind and cash donations just for this meeting, which is astonishing when you think about it. So I'm going to have Eric Olson and Gavin give us some background on some of these donations.
All right, I'll start with the Peacemaker donor, and they brought $5,000 to our board, and this is going to our Monticello Middle School curriculum. It was really fun to see Mr. Sherber greet the Peacemaker group as they had a cribbage tournament this summer, and he was able to accept the donation at the cribbage tournament and kicked off the whole tournament. And my wife and I played in that, and it was fun. We were leading for a while, but yeah, we couldn't hold that all the way through the end, so it was a good event. So thank you, Mr. Sherber, for bringing your expertise in bringing peacemakers to us. Anything you'd like to say, Mr. Sherber, on that one?
Just for your partner school, which we've been with for many years, and we're hard to match any funds that we get. There's incredible investment, and we're pushing the proportion to be a part of the Peacemaker.
Thank you. And then next up, Derek Silvestri from TV Studio Manager at St. Cloud State University, brought a forward three broadcast desk valued at $45,000. And so I'd like Gavin to talk a little bit about that since he was our contact person and made this all happen.
Thank you Superintendent Olson, Board Chair Zebarth, and the school board. This was actually a really unique opportunity for our district because my first four years of school, I went to St. Cloud State University, and I got into really know Derek Silvestri, who is the TV studio manager and has been working in that position since about 2008. So he's been a mentor of mine as far as, you know, in the TV world and the video broadcasting world. And so one day I was looking potentially to do some improvements at the district level for our productions. I reached out to him. One of the big things is having just a proper quality anchor desk, you know, one that you would see, for example, on like KSTP, Fox 9, etc. I said, reached out to Derek one day and said, hey, do you have any recommendations that's, you know, reasonably cost-effective because they can get pretty spending now to go over what a brand-new desk would cost for something like this? And then I got a reply back, and he says, I have desks for you. And, you know, a few years back, I knew originally he got these from Fox Sports Studios before that they were previously donated by Fox, before Bally Sports took over, which unfortunately, as I'm sure all of you know, they've gone bankrupt within recent months. Unfortunately, unfortunately, but, you know, we won't go too much in depth on that one. So he was originally going to give these to STMA as part of their AV program, and for whatever reason, things just didn't go as planned. Those desks were ready to go, from what I, my understanding, if something happened. But I, he said, I have these desks. I met with him just a week before last, and I said, you know what? These would be really awesome. These would be a great opportunity for our kids and for the whole district to have something like this from the AV level. So going through the first desk, there's two of these sizes that the magic studio here at the middle school, which I've had the privilege of beginning to advise this last spring semester, I thank you to Mr. Sherber, I actually had a chance to talk to him about this here at the be before the meeting. This is what those kiddos will get to use. It has some improvements that need to be made before the school year. The front will eventually have a TV that will get to have some really fun displays that the kids will get to use their creative knowledge and skill to create some cool graphics for those displays as well. This will be in the district studio. This will be for more of the bigger productions such as MHS Red Zone or other, you know, bigger productions that we do will be in the main studio, actually just adjacent to the boardroom. And really, the use cases that we'll see for this, the high school will also get a chance for bigger productions for section games, and also the student news wants to use these as well. They are more than happy to do so. So it'll be for student news, activities, coverage, and then any other big special district productions that we put on that will be able to bring a much more high-level production than we have been able to, you know, as we continue to grow the AV programs across the district. So again, a big thank you and shout-out to District Derek Silvestri of St. Cloud State University and the university as a whole. This is going to be a great opportunity for the kids moving forward as they get to use industry standard and really just professional-grade gear as we move forward. So, thank you.
Thank you Gavin. One, I was fortunate enough to get a personal tour to see these desks, and one of the things that I thought was really wonderful from our perspective is, you know, of course, we always welcome things that are gently used, but sometimes things like electronics, you know, they wear out or they become obsolete through the years. But the design of these desks are such that we can swap out electronics through the years and wires and things, so they really won't go out of style, so to speak, or be superseded by better technology coming out. They won't become obsolete, which I just thought was amazing, so.
Yeah, and actually, a quick note, too, that I, a couple points I forgot to mention, that, you know, the price side of it, that, you know, this was gifted to us for free, which was a super cool thing. Brand-new, these can easily run to $25,000 apiece. Within the devaluation over the years, that now they range from around $15,000. And I actually talked to my mom, because I know one of the things that we're going to, Crystal Fisher, who does actually a lot of vinyl stuff through cricketing, that to do some new branding for it. So I'm working with her on potentially trying to get something made for all three of the desks, to have really customized branding for them, so.
It'll be amazing. Well, we look forward to seeing more, and an amazing thank you to the audiovisual folks up at St. Cloud State for being such a partner and a helper to our fledgling, our audiovisual program that's growing by leaps and bounds.
Absolutely. Thank you. And of course, a big shout-out to David Phillip and his entire team, too, for helping really make this happen last week. David Phillip helped out with this, Tom Murray, Thor Lemke as well, and then the rest-of-the-day crew to help take a couple of trips to get them here, so thank you to them as well. All right?
Thank you Gavin. So we have a resolution for the acceptance of these gifts?
Therefore, be resolved by the Monticello School Board number 82 to gratefully accept the following donations: Peacemaker Minnesota $5,000 for Monticello Middle School curriculum, and the gift from Derek Silvestri from St. Cloud State University, three broadcast desks valued at $45,000 to improve the quality of video livestream productions for the district.
Second.
Motion read by Jeff Hagley, seconded by Melissa Curtis. All those in favor of the acceptance of these gifts, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. And the motion, resolution for acceptance of gifts passes six zero. Moving on to number seven on our agenda, teaching and learning. We have with us this evening both of our elementary school principals from Little Mountain and Pinewood Elementary, and then we're also going to hear from our middle school principals. So Nicole Crotto, welcome to the podium. She's going to give us a Little Mountain goal update.
She's going to need help, she'll lose them.
We'll get you fixed up.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. Good evening, school board members and Superintendent Olson. I'm looking forward to giving you a brief update on our goals from this past school year. So our instructional goal was to increase our spring benchmark scores by 3%. So we had looked at our spring benchmark scores in 2023 and then tried to increase them by 3% this past school year. So the reason we had picked that goal was 62% of our students in the spring of '23 were proficient according to our Fastbridge A-reading scores, and of course, we would like to continue to see that increase. And so from '23 to '24, unfortunately, we did not meet that goal consistently across our school building. We did have some grade levels that meet or met that goal, 5th grade especially, but we will continue to work towards that goal throughout this next year. One thing I wanted to point out, when looking at our fall scores of this past year to spring of this past year, we did make growth on the A-reading overall across the building, and one of our grade levels even achieved a 10% increase. That was one thing I wanted to celebrate tonight. So we'll continue to work towards the full implementation of functional phonics and amplify. As you know, we have a lot of new curriculum going on, and we'll continue to grow our instructional coaching model. The addition of our reading coaches, I know you've heard, but has been a really great asset to our buildings. So we'll continue to work with them and increase that coaching opportunity for our staff. We will continue to increase our data-driven PLC practices. We're going to continue to improve on our MTSS structure, and this year, our biggest focus will be the Tier Two interventions that we use during our win times, so we're going to really enhance that process. And then we will continue to celebrate the small successes along the way. We also had set a vision of the learner goal, and so we were focusing on integrity this year, and we taught our students that integrity is doing the right thing even when no one is watching. And the reason we chose that this year was just we had seen an increase in unexpected student behaviors and students kind of not taking responsibility for their actions and then struggling with transition times. And so this year, our goal was to make sure that students could define integrity and give examples of what it means, take ownership of their actions, and then do the right thing even when no one is watching. So we did determine that most students were able to do that. Of course, we still see behaviors from now and then, but we did access our Star Room, which is where our Gen Ed BI is staffed, and use that more consistently just to help support students, and we saw a lot of positives through that. This year, we're looking forward to continuing our SEL block in the morning, and we're going to be implementing a new SEL curriculum and continue to build strong character traits in our students. We're also going to incorporate more student engagement during our morning announcements. And one thing I didn't put on here, but I had thought I wanted to highlight, we added a student council this year at Little Mountain, and that was a really great way to have more student voice and role models within our building. And then we will continue to focus on the vision of learner attributes. And that is the end. Very short and sweet, but I know we're spending lots of time together during our work session as well. Questions?
Just have one quick question. On the increase in the unexpected student behaviors and students not taking responsibility, it just says an increase. Is it something that is just something you noted this year, or is it just a large increase?
I would say overall, just a general, we often say students are changing and that we need to learn how to change with them. So just a general increase. I, being newer to Little Mountain, I know my behavior data from year one to year two wasn't a huge increase, but something we'll continue to monitor. Yeah, I think just that general sense of more behaviors.
Okay.
I'd like to add to Casey's question. Is that seem to be concentrated at any particular grade level? Like, do you see it more among your older elementary kids or your younger elementary kids?
I would say the behaviors just look different. The bigger kids sometimes are a little more competitive or aggressive during recess time and things, whereas the younger kids, it's more just, you know, teaching them to be honest and again, do that right thing when no one is looking. So I would say not a specific grade level, it looks a little bit different depending on the age of the kids.
Thank you. Any other questions for Principal Crotto?
Where you didn't meet that, do you feel like the goal was wrong, or was the approach wrong?
Typically, when there's a curriculum implementation, it's not very likely that we'll see growth right away that first year, so I think that's part of it, that just with all of the changes that we were trying to implement, we are hoping to see much more growth this next year now that we have those kind of practices and curriculum in place and we know a little bit more about the program.
Anyone else for Principal Crotto? Thank you very much, and I think next we're going to hear from Principal Shelley Gilmore from the Pinewood Elementary School. Welcome, Shelley.
Side of a great teacher. She learns from the best, and then she helps me out, so I'm ready to go. Sure, Zebarth's board members, Superintendent Olson, community members. Yes, it's great to see all of you here tonight. I am pleased to be here tonight to talk about the goals that, talk about our progress on our goals this year. So our goal was modeled after the district goal and is very similar to the Little Mountain goal, where our goal was to have 70% of our students be at benchmark according to the two different assessments that we use, early reading for our first graders and then the A-reading for our second through fifth grade students. And our goal is to be at that 70% proficiency at the winter of 2026. We were hoping to be at a 3% increase by this spring. We did not meet our goal of 3% this spring, and there's a few reasons for this. One of them, as Principal Crotto talked about, we did implement two different curriculum resources, and it takes a while. Implementation science says that it's really typical to see a dip as our instructional staff are learning how to use the new resources. The other piece, more notably, is that it's really a shift in how we teach reading. So in the past, there was a lot of work on memorization of words. You may have remembered as kids or your own children, really working on flashcards and going through the flashcards and spelling tests and making sure that, you know, you could spell everything correctly. Today, what we're working on is really looking at the letter sounds and how those letter sounds form words. And the reason this is so beneficial for kids is it helps students decode words that are really difficult as they grow older. So when they're in high school and they're reading, you know, in a social studies text, and they're reading words that you don't see in your typical everyday vocabulary, you're able to decode those words, you know what it is and be able to make a better connection. So, so yes, we didn't make our goal this year. However, it's just going to take a little time for our students to catch up to this different evidence-based type of teaching, and it's really going to benefit them in the long run. I can't tell you how proud I am of our students this year and how proud I am of our staff this year. Everyone had worked so hard and did their best. Some of the things that our students did as a result of the focus on our goals is they were engaged in phonics instruction at their own levels. They demonstrated understanding of why letters make certain sounds when paired together, which make words that I just talked about. They demonstrate increased background knowledge, which is also a big indicator in comprehension and fluency, and they became more fluent readers. So our staff, as a result of the focus on our goals, our staff grew so much instructionally this year, really working on what the research says and implementing that research in their practice. They worked to meet the individual needs of their students, and they never gave up. I'll be honest, there, we were not without tears this year. It was hard, and the reason why there were tears is because our teachers care so much. And when you see kids not make progress as has happened in the past, because you're teaching them how to memorize things, it's really hard on their heart, but they trusted the process, they trust in the research, and they're excited about what they can do next year to make improvements. They continued to analyze data. We've never used data to the degree that we have this year, which is good. It helps to drive instructional decision-making. We had Title I teachers pushing into classrooms. We used strategies that were learning and professional development, and I'm also very, very thankful for our reading coach who's able to provide that one-on-one coaching for our teachers. So steps that we're going to take to achieve our literacy goals is to continue to use a flexible model for phonics instruction while also ensuring that students receive grade-level instruction. Students or teachers will continue to receive professional development, will continue to use our team time to be able to reflect on practice, use our data, determine what we need to do to make changes. We're also going to continue to use what we're learning with the science of reading and work together as a team with collective efficacy to make sure that we're all doing the right thing and supporting each other through these challenging changes. We're going to continue to strengthen our MTSS process, so make sure that our core instruction is strong and make sure that our students that have extra academic needs and social and emotional needs get the intensive intervention that they need. We also had our vision of a learner goal of integrity, and our students were able to define integrity. They were strong enough to do what they know is right. Students help each other, demonstrate what it means to be a person of integrity. I had a few students in my office this year and, you know, working out some problems that they had, and I can't tell you how proud I was when I hear a student say, this person wasn't a person of integrity. Thank you for using your words. But then we're able to use those words and talk about what that really means and how they can make a positive change. Our staff worked on choosing purpose over perfection in their work, showing students that it's okay to make mistakes, it's important to work hard. We had a wraparound approach to social-emotional learning where we had all of our instructional staff working with students, not just their homeroom teacher. We utilized our second step curriculum, and we used integrity throughout our day. So steps that we will continue to use to meet our vision of a learner goal is we will also, we also have our dedicated SEL block in the morning. We'll continue to implement our SEL curriculum. Our school social workers are putting together some school-wide lessons, so it's not just classroom but classroom, it's school-wide, and then we will celebrate students that are demonstrating vision of a learner attributes. I want to thank each and every one of you for your support at Pinewood. Again, I am so proud of the work that our staff has done. It's just an incredible group of people, and I'm blessed to be the principal at Pinewood. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. So the 3% goal isn't met in one of the, one of the items mentioned was, you know, it's something new and the staff grew instructionally. So as everyone grew and learned more about the process and how to become better, would it be fair to assume that then next year, the goal would be more than 3%, so we're not losing out a whole year?
That's certainly, that's certainly our hope. I, in my mind, I really believe that we can do that. I don't know about a 6%, but I definitely would say, you know, we're hoping for more than three.
But, yeah, that'd be great.
I have a question, pegging off of Principal Crotto. Can you speak to behaviors? Do you feel that they're pretty stable? Do you think they've increased, decreased over the last year in your building?
I think behaviors are pretty stable. We are finding, we find that there are more behaviors in our first and second grade students that we haven't seen that in the past. So what we're finding is that we really need to concentrate on, you know, integrity is a great piece there, is concentrate on teaching what those expected behaviors are. So we have kids that, you know, just have a difficult time understanding and applying, and it's great to have our behavior intervention person. We do a lot with intervention matching, so we determine what the need is and find an intervention to meet that need. Emily Mitchell, our district behavior analyst, is phenomenal. She's done a great job in helping us, and we have, we're putting some more proactive things in place for, for our first grade team as our new first graders come over, based on what she has seen working with Principal Green and first grade teachers and students.
And is there like a parental education component that you're incorporating to that as well to connect school and home for some of our youngest learners?
There is not yet, but that's something that we've been thinking about with our family engagement, is talking about that, how, we know how important that home-to-school connection is, and it's also important that parents, they do a phenomenal job of parenting at home, but when their child is at school, it can be something that's a little bit different. And so meeting with parents and talking about, this is how you can support your child with behaviors that they're doing well in at home and how they can apply that to a larger group setting.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. Elementary school-wise, do you use the same system like the middle school uses to track behaviors to help you guys come with an educated plan then?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
I think one thing that I'd just like to say, as a similar question has been asked a couple of times about next year, what will our increase be? And I think that one's a very important question, but another important question for us to begin to monitor, which we're going to be doing as part of our admin retreat, is really looking at some longitudinal data, too, because what I really hope is that our middle school, our high school principals and teachers and support staff are really seeing, you know, the fruits of what the elementary is doing, because that unification from pre-K, which we're even making sure that we have some pre-K initiatives that align with K through five, some of those longitudinal pieces of data are going to be, that's what you're really hoping for, because it's not just a, let's teach you the test, let's, let's figure it out, and let's move one year, and then all of a sudden scramble in hopes that, in hopes that you move it again. We believe that strongly that the work that we're doing, the systems of support that we're doing, is going to longitudinally equate to data that's going to, our principals and teachers and staff are going to see and feel, so.
I think we're doing a better job than we ever have in this district, tracking regularly, not just once a year with, with kind of an overview. I mean, we're really drilling down into the data, and, you know, weekly, monthly, you know, we get a briefing probably every two to three months about progress being made, and that is definitely a priority of the board, is academic improvement and implementation of the READ Act and all that as directed by the state. So I really feel like we're on top of it, and this was a learning year. We got a lot of our staff trained up this year, and so we're hoping to see those improvements this year. Thank you.
That's a good one. But not all at home, but during the school day, seem like concerned exactly what that means and how we can help with that? That's a great question. And I'm not in everyone's home, just keep this in mind. I have raised some pretty, two pretty great kids, but I think it's, when parents are teaching lessons to their children, oftentimes, they're, they're talking about, everyone wants their kids to be well-behaved, people of integrity, doing the right thing when they're outside of the home, and, and those things are just said. But it's another step to, to really put it into practice, you know, there can be some things with, you know, with role-playing, there can be some things with, you know, having those conversations around the dinner table, you know, when you hear about something that happened, you know, what would you do if? So it's, it's on a larger scale, and I think every principal would say that, that we've heard that, you know, my child would never do that. Well, they just did. And kids are learning, kids are learning, kids are growing. You know, the word discipline means to teach, and that's where the lens that we're going through is, is just continually teaching and having that partnership with home. Well, if you think the board can help with that, I mean, we know that's a problem. That's why we spend so much time on SEL and not, we should be working. Right, right, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'd like to welcome our middle school principal and assistant principal Jeff Sherber and Rachel Sandquist. Welcome, and we're going to hear some goals updates on the middle school.
School Board Chair Zebarth, Superintendent, I want to thank you
I want to thank you for the opportunity to share our goals. Looks like in nonlinear fashion, we're going to, we're going to finish up our goals with the middle school. Share some, we've got four bulleted points here. We'll talk about the instructional outcome goal we looked at last year and our data. Share a bit about that. Some other data points we want to share. There's some other data points that we will want to share with you that we think are important as well. Got our vision of a learner update. And then we've got a graphic that'll show a bit about some of those next steps that we have. So our instructional goal this year, we looked at, you'll hear some of the same language that the other principals had used. We used some of our FastBridge data in math and reading. We chose our spring-to-spring scores because typically the spring is high tide for kids when they're taking this. They get tested three times throughout the year. And we chose 2%. It's consistent with the other, with the district-wide goals that we had set. And Rachel will share a little bit about how we did in those areas.
Yeah, so here is just a little chart about our scores by grade level. So you'll know, oh, the laser works, okay. So you'll notice that the, each grade level's on the left there and then reading is that first section and math is the second one. And the circled numbers are the positive percentage points that each grade level grew from spring of last year to spring to this year. And if you look at the next slide, it's just that whole school snapshot, the net growth that we made in both A-reading and A-math. You'll know, I know that you'll have the question about the seventh grade didn't grow in that A-reading group and Jeff's going to talk a little bit about that in just a minute here. But overall, we had really dedicated staff to implement reading strategies across curricular areas and we'll talk a little bit about that in a second. And our math department works very hard to continually put kids in the right classes and push them appropriately to see those increases. So we were proud to, to see growth in so many of the different grade level areas. A couple of other data points we just wanted to share with you along with the academic goal that we set. Just because I feel like there's a couple of groups of people in our building that deserve a little celebrating. Science is often an area that doesn't collect a lot of the reading or the math data, but they willingly accept the reading strategies that we implement with the science of reading curriculum. Lindsay Rutman has presented to our entire staff, they've embraced those. They've gone so far as to create their own pre and post-test monthly that they give to students based on units. So that the idea is over that longitudinal time, they're tracking student progress from sixth to seventh to eighth grade with all those standards. By the time they get to that eighth grade MCA, they have a really solid foundational knowledge and are reviewing the content that will be assessed in the spring of their eighth grade year. And so last year, we only had a 24% proficient rate, proficiency rate in our eighth grades. And this year, with that implementation of just one year of that pre and post-test, they jumped almost 12%. And so I just wanted to shout out our science cohort members and the work that they're doing of a really passionate group of educators willing to put that work in and create, literally create their own data so that they can track students' progress. And I just wanted to share that with the board because they deserve that recognition. Oh yeah, Jeff's going to talk about the attendance here.
So Cindy had challenged every building last fall to put a attendance goal together. You know, as we came out of the pandemic where attendance was not a priority, it was a bit of a challenge. We were asked to graph and chart and put objectives together and a strategy so we can have 90% of the students in school 90% of the time. With the help of Cindy and with Jason Borgstrom's help, we gathered that data. We had strategies to include publishing it in our newsletter. Our teachers were very well-versed on what encouraging kids and the value of being in class and on time. We struggled a bit, we didn't, we started out at that 88%. You could see we finished the year. I was pretty proud to say in May, we got over 90%. And that's a pretty exciting piece. I kid Eric Olson from time to time that there's a time in the spring when the hockey tournaments are going on and the kids are leaving early. And I anticipated there'd be a little dip in there, but nope, that wasn't the case. So I want to applaud our school counselor, Nicole DeGrave. She worked closely with Wright County to establish some accountability measures for those students that struggled. And I want to applaud our teachers as well, who made it a priority in the classroom to get kids in there and to make lessons relevant so they would show up. So this was a big piece that we're pretty proud of and that challenge was accepted. This, we put this slide in here and hopefully you guys got a chance to take a look at it. For the purpose of just sharing, we just talked about one set of data today. There's a, there's a ton of data out there at the middle school level and you could see in the upper middle or upper elementary classes as well. Lot of data points, a lot of assessments going on. If you're an eighth grader, you get assessed across the board in MCAs and in A-reading and A-math and many other different areas. We could have a slide and a goal for every one of those bullets up there. The challenge we have right now is to prioritize what it is that we're going to measure and, and focus on. So I just wanted to share that as just a graphic to say that, you know, it's, it's a busy time at the middle school. We've got a ton of data and it is indeed a challenge to provide the time for staff to pour through that data, use that data to drive instruction. That's one of our biggest challenges that we have at the middle school.
I'm just going to touch on our vision of a learner update as well. We had chosen back in the fall to select being effective communicators and really promoting communication and collaboration with purpose and intent in a variety of modes to include writing, listening, and speaking skills. And that's both academically and behaviorally. And so we did a lot of reading PD with Lindsay Rutman, a lot of reading strategies. Shout out also to our reading interventionists, Kristin Zalik and Joy Hausmann. Worked really closely with targeted group of students on their academic, oops, academic goals in order to effectively read, write, speak, and listen. Joy Hausmann would come into our office regularly to celebrate how kids are growing in her classes. So that was just a fun little tidbit. We also, if you remember back in, I think it was last summer, Amy Herfindall did some really hard work on presenting to you guys why we needed to have some teaching tolerance instruction as well and how we taught kids how to communicate kindly and with intention and without having to bring in any derogatory or negative comments. And so this next slide is on that incident data. So if you look in that middle column, Amy had pulled this data last fall for you, that we had 51 recorded incidents of obscene derogatory comments or actions towards students in an office-managed minors column as we would categorize them. That's where the office takes it in, processes with the students, works with families, lets them know what's going on. And then we, the expectation is that we reteach, repair, and move forward. And then we ended at the 26 majors where it was either repeated, really obscene, where we had to take action beyond just a typical consequence. And so that was last year's data. And you'll notice that the office-managed minors this year didn't necessarily go down a whole lot, but our majors, meaning if it was a first to a second offense, I guess, that decreased pretty significantly by over half. And so our teachers did a really good job of doing that, teaching tolerance, those three lessons, the intent versus impact, being an upstander versus bystander. And I'm blanking on the third one, but it'll come to me once I walk out the door tonight. We also have our seven mindset curriculum that the students engaged in. Our staff were obviously diligent in teaching all of that to our students and they also asked for skills on how to de-escalate students when they were getting escalated, when they were getting upset, when there were things that might have caused them to react in a poor manner where then they were also putting themselves in trouble, as well as how to communicate with parents on how they would tell a parent or a family, hey, we had something come up in class today and I want to work with you on this. And so those are some of the things that we saw based on our vision of a learner goal and it being an effective communicator. And then again, that, back to that academic piece, Lindsay Rutman was a huge core component. Another thing I forgot to mention with our science department, they use claim evidence reasoning where they are promoting students say, okay, you know, go through your scientific method or your process of what's happening here, how do you know? And then reason with the group around you. And they're teaching that explicitly to be able to effectively communicate and understand what, what it is that they're learning. So there are a lot of different observables that you might have seen throughout the year related to effective communication, but these are some of the highlights that we're just really proud of, our students and staff really engaging in and asking for. So I'm just really, really proud of them.
I just want to share a little bit too, if you heard what Rachel mentioned, that staff are coming to us asking for some help, how to communicate with parents. So we had a seminar on that. They came and asked about some help with de-escalation. And that's a healthy rapport that we have with staff, their comfort level, coming to do so. This graphic, I know it's a busy one and I hopefully got a chance to kind of look it over. It just, I'll just, just a couple of key points. It illustrates our, the next steps that we'd like to tape, take. And you're, a lot of it's consistent with what the elementary and the high school principals had shared as well. On this graph, you'll see the teachers are all on one of seven cohorts. There's teacher leaders, they're listed in green there, and they've been working hard this past year to establish expectations in their cohort groups and establish roles and responsibilities. And it's not easy, leading your colleagues in these departments, but they're, they've taken place. Every department has some things that they will and have been working on and are committed to. The non-negotiables, those are in blue. Everybody works on that instructional framework. What helped, put together an effective design that includes feedback, assessment, closure, gradual release, responsibility. We provided opportunities for teaching staff to have discussions of what's going well, what's not going well at a department level led by staff. The science of reading, I think we heard a little bit from Shelley, a little bit about the importance of teachers being well-versed on what we know now. That's very different than how teachers were trained in the past about the science of reading. I believe, Jamie, one of the questions you had for tonight's session was, what is some very impactful thing? Number one thing we can do to act reading? I will tell you that having these reading strategies practiced and the knowledge of how students learn how to read across the board with every staff member, so students recognize it in every class that they go in, is incredibly important. So those leaders on the top of that page, whether you're in math, science, social, or language arts, are reading teachers. And they are, their job is to look at the data in yellow and to see what they can do to help contribute to those scores that we have and what they can do. I don't think Rachel gave herself enough credit here. She's in with those science teachers talking about and they being part of and celebrating those scores. That group is a true model for what that, what we like to, they did pour over data on a regular basis. They talked about lessons and what they can do. They did it regularly. And most of the work wasn't done during the meetings, it was done in between the meetings, the discussions during prep times and the discussions after school, what that looks like. It's a true model of what we can do if we're given the time and opportunities to do so. Lots of that data, as I had mentioned up there, that you can look for. That CBM is curriculum-based data that the other departments will be using. Some departments are going to be very busy. They have some curriculum reviews take place. Both math and reading will be doing that as well. Lastly, well, there's two other bullets there, the trimester discussion. We've been asked to look at transitioning our schedule to a trimester. It's not very conducive to our middle school schedule right now, will be challenging. It's not something we asked for, but we're going to take a look at that. It's going to impact those discussions that Casey Munson will be leading at that level as well, along with all those other pieces. And then just a couple of things, those bullets on the bottom. Things, it's important to know, the scores that you saw in specific to reading, we're going to change how we do things in the sixth grade level. We're going to add a class. We're going to double down on that science of reading. And part of the components of that is using a nonfiction material that the students are familiar with. We're going to partner with the science department. And those, the language arts department and the science department will be adding a class in sixth grade. So those kids will be working with all the key components of reading, the phonetics, breaking down vocabulary, how they attack big words and things like that. And doing so at a sixth grade level, Kristin Zalik and Ryan Nett are taking the lead, working with that group. It's very exciting to work, and they'll be partnering with the science department to do so. I'm going to let Rachel share a little.
Yeah, that bottom corner, the MONI slide. So we, our counseling staff came up with a way to really introduce and integrate our new sixth graders into our middle school model, our middle school lifestyle, so to speak. And so they came up with what we're calling MONI Slide, which is an invitation that went out to all this, this year's incoming sixth graders to come in in the beginning of August for a day with a bunch of our student leaders who signed up and were trained to lead these groups of students through what it's going to be like to be in the middle school. And so they're doing locker combo practice, they're going to go through the lunch line with the kitchen. We partnered with them. They're going to go on tours. I think it's a scavenger hunt-based tour, so they'll have the leaders that go through with them. And they're just going to have an opportunity to really get to know what the middle school looks like, talk about our star expectations right off the bat. And then the other two things listed there, we're aligning our curriculum with the elementaries for our character strong so that that language will be consistent all the way through eighth grade, which I think will, again, longitudinally, we'll see really good results with that because it will be consistently built upon from year to year. And then one thing that I, again, I'm proud of our staff on is the use of EduClima. And I have the slide, Amy Herfindall put the slide together and I forgot it. I'll send it to you if you want to see it. But just the amount of use increase from our staff members, our teaching staff from last year to this year in entering the data of behaviors and how we want to manage, how they manage their behaviors within their classroom, really increased by a lot. And so much so that we had teachers coming to us in the spring to say, we're, we're doing the input of the data, how is it that we're managing it? And so they came back and tasked us with, you know, we're, we're measuring it, we're measuring it. Do we, how, how can we manage this better? What can we do differently? So it's, it's, it's a catalyst for conversation to start our next year off so that we can be on the forefront of, okay, how are we going to view this data? How are we going to use it in an effective way to help our students be successful constituents of our school community? And so I'm really looking forward to the fact that they are invested in using EduClima across the board. Our eighth grade group specifically really stepped it up in terms of measuring all of that data for us. And so we've got work to siphon through it and then a way that how we're going to manage it, ideally in the fall as we join school again.
I'll share, one of the reasons why that eighth grade group stepped up mid-year, Rachel and Amy were using some of the data that the sixth and the seventh grade teachers were inputting. She was using it to show how that's going to drive how our, our instruction is and how we're going to monitor behaviors. Eighth grade teachers stepped up and saw how that's being used and then they were truly on board, they bought in. They could see that we were using the data. And that's a tribute to Amy and Rachel and the hard work they put in to selling that and training staff on how to input data and now use it. This last slide here is just as specific to the current realities that we have in front of us. We've got 19 fewer minutes at the middle school. We could complain about that. But what we're focusing on is that's, we do have more PD time in the morning and that's very specific. And we're going to be more intentional with the valuable minutes that we do have. It's very important, that's part of those discussions that'll go on in that cohort model where we're going to discuss how we're using those 55 minutes. And it may look different because of that time restriction as well. Got a few less resources and a few less staff. We're going to have to be more intentional with our curriculum and with the courses that we use. We're going to have to be more intentional with how we spend our time. With the less staff, I'll just share with you, the middle school, I don't know how you guys survive junior high or middle school, but probably don't circle that time as your most favorite time in your career, your educational experience. We need our best people. We've often said you've got to be a little weird if you're going to stick into the middle school for an extended period of time. Yes. However, we're pretty proud of the group we have. We're very proud of the group we have. They've embraced that age group. They're proud to be part of that group and they are on board in this for the long haul. And so that being said, that's a big benefit we have is the staff in front of us and their, their chosen profession. And now we'll take questions.
I just have a comment that I want to share. I want to commend you and the other principals that are in the room, all of the principals that are here. About a year ago, we sat down as a board with Superintendent Olson and did goal-setting over several episodes, drilling down on. drilling down on what do we want to marry up within the district in terms of, you know, slogans as opposed to evidence-based stuff we can see. Our kids come into school, are they learning? Are academic numbers going up? I know he has driven all of you very hard on that this year. And it was very obvious to me from the three presentations we've had that we are connecting those dots in a way that we maybe haven't done as good a job on in the past. We're not at our goals yet, but I think we're headed in the right direction. And I thank you for all of your hard work and extra work. This is not business as usual, just the way we did it last year or the year before. And so it's new to everybody, and we're striving really hard to put together the best program we can to improve the academic performance of our kids, which has slipped nationwide, statewide. We all know it, and we're confronting it head-on in our district and doing everything that we can to turn it around. So I just want to thank you for your hard work in that area and for the detailed, objective information that you've brought us. All of the principals, thank you.
I want to thank you for the data too. It was fun to see from last year to this year. Question to clear up, the science MCA scores that's on here, the, the increase from 24.5 to 36.6, is that in regards specifically to reading and them implementing some of the reading curriculum into their teaching or?
Good question. Sorry, do you want to take that one?
Well, I'll just share, the, the science assessments are based on, there's engineering standards in there, there's science standards. There's life science, earth science, physical science questions in there, and that's what it's measuring. They take it in eighth grade, however, it measures, of course, a material that they've covered in sixth and seventh grade as well. So I think, you know, Rachel's in the room with those science teachers and prepping the students to pull some of that knowledge that they got from a sixth grade or a seventh grade class and applying it is what they worked very hard to do. So it's, it's partnered with the, the reading and the math, but what's measured is their competency based on the, their, the standards in science and engineering.
And I think one thing I'll add too is that they learned after this year, I think the model for this past year was sixth grade really focused on claim. Seventh grade did claim evidence, and then eighth grade did claim evidence reasoning. And they said at their year-end meeting, like, I think that we need to start claim evidence reasoning all the way in sixth grade, just at a scaffolded level so that the sixth graders pick it up, and it's the same language, same expectation all the way through, which really allows them to critically think and analyze whatever those standards are put, either the assessment is being put in front of them so that they can critically think about it, because I think that kids just want to click and go, and they, it's promoting that critical thinking piece of it, I think. That's my assumption.
Good, thank you.
I'm excited to hear about the MONI Slide program. I think that's going to be really helpful, the getting in there and trying out the locker combo and the tour of the school. That's like one of the main things I hear from parents is the anxiety of them switching to the school, so I really like that idea.
I want this, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, yeah. Oh, and then I was just going to say, and the implementing of the sixth grade course focusing on literacy. Great.
I want to say we have over 60 kids signed up for MONI Slide right now. That was as of a couple of weeks ago when Nicole was in planning for it. And if you want to come and check it out, I think it's August 7th from 9:00 to noon. You guys are invited.
There's last year's seventh graders, this year's eighth. We're excited for that group of eighth graders too. That's a unique experience for them to go down to that sixth grade and provide that leadership.
I think it might have been Cindy Foshing, I don't know if it was her that said this, but I heard a phrase within the last year that said, "Every teacher is now a reading teacher." And that was kind of an aha moment. We used to think about reading as something that children learned K through three. You know, you learn to read, and then grade four and up, you read to learn. And I think maybe some of the good things that have come out of the Read Act and some of that is that we didn't used to focus on reading in six through 12. And hearing that that is now a focus, I'm, I'm encouraged as well. So thanks for bringing that up, Melissa, but thanks for your presentation.
Yeah, I just wanted to say good job, and I want to second Kathy's initial comment on the elementary school and everyone else involved in the process. It's a large program. It's, it's nice to see the data. Sorry, you want me to repeat everything?
You can.
Well, I will. I have to second Kathy's initial comments on the elementary school and middle school and all the work that's been done. It's, it's a large program, there are a lot of, a lot of moving parts to it. It's nice to see the data that you guys are putting together because we can go back and, you know, use that as a timestamp to see where we were, where we're going. And then also this year, realignment, getting everyone on, everyone on board, going the same direction, I think is, it's, it's going to pay us dividends here in the next couple of years, and the, the main benefit is how the students are going to progress down there. So just want to say good job on everything.
Thank you, Casey.
I just wanted to bring up two points of connection, and one is unification that you guys have both touched on. And then the other one is M and M. And so unification is huge. So like when you think about a district, and we've heard the word collective efficacy, but it's the belief in every employee, every student, every family, that if we all do our jobs and we do them very well, what we say, what we do, our actions, and everything is in that collective piece, and we're all trying to get the most gains and growth for every child. And that's a huge responsibility, but it's one very, very few teams can ever get to. And only a few of the, of the best, whether it's sports or whether it's organizations or schools, reach that pinnacle. And it's because sometimes we're not able to really look at that constant goal of who are we serving, what are we serving? And it's excited to see so many people here tonight, excited to see the connections of, like, if we have a, a science cohort doing well, we know that we can take videos of that, that cohort and what they're doing, because we're taking some instructional videos now. You'll see Gavin and Allison Colwell doing some of that. But it's those types of sharing and those types of unification of systems, because you might have a system that you think is working well until you see something else that might get your brain going in a way that can help you as a, as a staff member even improve further. So I'm really excited about that unification. You guys did an awesome job. I wouldn't have had to say anything. I just, it's, it's everybody, it's everybody. And then that last one, M and M, 19 years, I, was the first time that I ever heard that word, M and M. And just for the board and for anybody who ever has any question, the elementary has used the word SEL, but the middle school has been using M and M for 19-plus years because it's just what the Chicago Cubs do. When they, when you get employed with Chicago Cubs, you get the Cubs way, you know, manual. And you do things in, in a, in a way to teach you about, you know, the behavior in the locker room and, and how, what it means to be a Chicago Cub. And that's really what we're trying to do, is we're trying to teach every child a unified system. And so now we have a unified curriculum, which we didn't have, we were using two curriculum. And our middle school is saying, come on, elementary, we need that down there, because we're seeing students be different, and we need longer to work with them to see improvement. So I know sometimes words get kind of stolen from media, but they've been around for 19-plus years where the M and M has been doing amazing things to help kids through a difficult time of their life so that they can get to their academics. And that's all we're doing as a system. So just thank you, so M and M and unification, just to bring that together to show how it's happening all the way through the system now.
And our strategic, I mean, I feel like we're connected better across the district maybe than we ever have been. It's not just lip service, it's not just phrases on a page. So again, thank you very much for all of the work and coming in July to give us an update. I think we're in a healthy place district-wide, and we're hopeful that we'll make some progress this year that we can be proud of next year. So thank you.
So moving on to item number eight, innovation and leadership, we have an exciting announcement that Superintendent Olson is going to discuss with us.
All right, so 19 years ago, speaking of 19 years ago, I got to meet somebody by the name of Sarah Welk. Sarah Welk was a building social worker at that time. And what I learned about Sarah Welk is that she is one of the most authentic, if not the most authentic person I've ever met in my life. And you know, a, a sign of a great leader is, a great leader is somebody who is when they're, when they're walking down the hallway or when they're giving a presentation, or when they conclude a task and they look behind them, that there's people still with them. There are always people with Sarah Welk because she is just an amazing leader, she's an amazing person. And I've just loved watching her growth, but, but it started with that authentic piece. As she's moved from the middle school building level social work, she has spent the last five years at the district office serving a community group. The community group was a bounce-back liaison and district school social worker. And that position grew and morphed over the years while the funding decreased over the years. So it started as a position almost fully funded to be able to do outreach, but then connect that outreach so that we weren't waiting until a, a person ended up in the community and needed help. We were starting early intervention early, and so it was a, I, I went and made a pitch to Centricare. So it first started getting started, and then we ran a competitive interview process. And that's when she first got hired into that role. That role has morphed, and it's just been unique. As I've watched it with other cabinet people, we see that we have a, you know, a person from a certified group sitting at the table making executive or building, and both district and building level decisions and support and across the district. And it just started to make sense to look at a position that was more district-wide because that's what the person was doing. And so the board, in two-board fashion, wanted us to run a competitive process, which is, I think, always going to get you further in the long run. And once again, Sarah Welk came through a competitive process where we did, at that time, just post it internally because we had several candidates that were interested. And through that process, Sarah Welk has now been hired as our district, our district student service director. And I would like to bring her up to tell a little bit about herself, but I couldn't miss the opportunity to share my feelings about her as the most authentic person that I know and the true sign of a leader. And that means that when you look behind you, there's still people excitedly following. Welcome.
Oh, there we go, thank you. Really should have been clapping for everybody else that did presentations. It was a little awkward that we didn't clap for you guys. So actually, we should be clapping for all the principals.
Looking like a social worker.
Yes, it's, I know. Yeah, I, I appreciate that. I look forward to this position. I thank you guys for this opportunity to be the first-ever director of student services for Monticello Schools. As Eric has shared, I've been in the district for 23 years, and I've actually made a career in this district, starting new positions. So as Eric shared, I start, I first started at the middle school on a grant and under Dr. Johnson. And, you know, we worked together and we created that position, and it morphed. And with Jeff Sherbert and his leadership, we were able to continue that position under a lot of scrutiny, a lot of referendum type of positioning, and with their backing, was able to keep that position in place. Not because it was me, but it was what was best for students and for our community and our schools. And I was able to remain there for 18 years. And so as Eric had shared, having the opportunity to do the district social work position, to be the bounce-back liaison and create that position and work with the community and with the hospital was an incredible experience and really pushed me personally and professionally. And again, that, that position morphs into the director of student services. And again, it's not because of me, it's because of what the position does, what it means for students and staff for our district and our community. So I look forward for the opportunity to continue to collaborate with the administrative team. As you know, we have an incredible team that has done a heavy lift in the last few years and has done a tremendous job, as you saw tonight. And our staff, our ESS, our pairs, our custodians, everybody, we do an incredible job. You guys and our backing. We do a great job together, and I look forward to working with every one of you to help develop and shape this position. Our district staff and administration, our team has done a tremendous amount of work to keep moving our students and district in the right direction, as you saw tonight, and we'll continue to see, because that's just who they are. I will continue to learn from other professionals in other districts to grow opportunities with our, within our district and how I can support all staff, students, and families. I thank you again for this opportunity, and I look forward to serving this district in this new role. So thank you. Thank you, Sarah. One of the things our board is very proud of is that we, when we need to restructure a position or look at a position, we take a really deep dive into, is this absolutely essential? And is it frivolous? Is it extraneous? And if you were to compare our organizational chart to other school districts, they may have a lot of assistance to assistance to assistance. And it might be a little bit difficult to figure out where everybody fits on the chart, but we don't do that here. We, we have people that are willing and able to wear many different hats. And so one of the things that we've done with this new director of student services position is we have a lot of mandates that come down from the state and the federal government as to programs that we have to administer. And now we have a home for a lot of that, a readily identifiable professional that's going to coordinate a lot of that. So I think this is a really important position for our district. It's not in any way just frivolously creating a new position or anything like that. So I just wanted to add some comments, and welcome Sarah, because I, I think she's already doing an enormous amount of the job before, and she has an even bigger job position description on her table now. So I was a bit surprised when I saw how detailed the new position description is. So, so welcome Sarah, and get to work. So, so moving on now to Tina Burkholder from the Director of Business Services is going to give us a summertime update on the cash flow update. I feel like we should clap for Tina.
I'm fine.
He probably gets the less, the least claps of anybody.
Numbers are fun, right? Just reading, it's numbers. So annually, I like to give a cash flow projection update. Sometimes I can get to this in May or June. This year, I'm bringing this to you in July. This exercise, you look at the next year and a half of your cash flow coming in or out. And recently with, the majority of our aid comes from the state. 80% of our budget is state aid. And with them being more stable in their budgeting, we get 90% of our aid during the year, and they hold 10% after the year's over. They want to make sure everybody's student accounting is accurate, there's no errors, there's no over-reporting, under-reporting. You get what you get based on the kids that you have, and so they want to make sure the reporting is clean. So that's why they hold that last 10% until everything's final. So because that we've been able to be at that 90, 10% cash flow from the state, we've been very stable. When it was down to, I think it was 65% during the year and 35% after the fact, that was a really low point for school districts, and we had to borrow short-term to make sure we could, make sure direct deposits weren't bouncing or anything like that, that we had money to pay our bills and keep the lights on. So with this, I had a chart that just kind of summarizes the ins and outs, making a couple assumptions on what percents would change in our expenses and revenues coming in. Schools tend to see a large influx of cash coming in October and November, May and June from the property tax, from the counties. We're getting our property tax money, so we do see a lot of money coming in at that point. And then the state intern knows that and doesn't give us as much of our 90% in those months. They spread it out in the other months. But for us, our low point is the end of January to the beginning of March. So try to be mindful of that. I have a spreadsheet that every day, keeping track of the money coming in and out. You know, what are the, the bills going out on Friday, what's the payroll totals on the 15th and 30th? What's the state aid coming in on the 15th and 30th? And try to invest as much as I can throughout the year that excess bounce to earn some interest revenue to help the budget. So for the next year and a half, we have positive cash flow. And you're only supposed to look at your funds that are general nature, so our general fund, food service, and our community ed fund. You're not supposed to take into account the debt service fund. The property tax money coming in should only be set aside for the bond payments that go out. And when you do get looked at from like bond agencies, when they're looking at your financial statements, if you do have- statements, if you do have a negative cash in your kind of general funds or food service and community service, but you have a big positive balance in your debt service funds, then they know you're kind of borrowing from yourself, and you can get a negative outlook in your bond rating for that. So trying to make sure that we're not borrowing from ourselves, from our debt service side, and just keeping things all positive. So happy to report we won't have to borrow for the next year and a half, but again, it's just always something that I look at every year and try to monitor as the year progresses. It's not an action item, it's just a report.
Any questions for Tina?
Hey, looks good. There's a comment, I think it's hard to overstate how good Tina is and what she does.
Yeah, we're really lucky to have her services, she's top-notch. Even the folks that do the audits say so.
All right.
Thank you, Tina. And next, we have some good news. Mr. Rob Daniker, Director of Human Resources, is going to give us some good news.
Chair Zebra, members of the board, Superintendent Olson, happy to share with you that we bring forward a recommendation to approve the 2023-25 custodial and maintenance master agreement. And so the board agenda tonight contained a copy of the red line, as well as a copy of the summary that I'll go through with the board here. And so I'm not sure if we have the summary up, but...
Can you bring the summary up, Gavin?
Thank you, Gavin. Perfect. All right, so background information, tentative agreement was reached regarding the 2023-25 master agreement with Monticello, whoop, sorry about that, it says food services, it should say custodial and maintenance employees, Local 284, on Wednesday, June 12, 2024. This agreement is ratified by the Monticello Custodial Maintenance Employees on Wednesday, July 10, so just last week, and is recommended that the Board of Education approve this agreement. What follows are the essential financial changes in each of the two years of the agreement. In year one, which was actually last year, 23-24, there is a 3.75 increase on all cells, and so individuals who worked last year who are still employed or retired in good standing will see retroactive payment on that 3.75 on all cells. In terms of health insurance, there's a 0% last year. And then Appendix C, we created a longevity step of five years, and that was added to the agreement. And for those increments of longevity that were previously there, they saw a 5 cent increase per hour at each of those increments. For year two, which started July 1 of '24 and extends through June 30 of '25, there'll be a 4.0 improvement on all cells. Health insurance will go up 16% in terms of the district contribution to family coverage, and then there's a $975 a month district contribution towards single coverage. Again, on longevity, increase of 5 cents at per hour at each increment. And then retiree health benefit, the retiree health benefit that existed in the custodial contract closed as of June 30, '24, and we established a new retiree HRA health benefit effective July 1, '24, similar to what we had done with the food service staff as well. In terms of language items in this contract, like all of our year-round employees, we added a 12th paid holiday, which is Juneteenth mandated by state law. And we also clarified in the custodial contract, New Year's Eve holiday rate of pay. We do have a New Year's Eve annual event that takes place at one of our building sites, we want to make sure that that was codified in the language of the contract. In terms of job posting, we clarified that newer vacant positions will be posted on the district website and via district email, basically bringing that job posting process really into the 21st century and how we approach that. We also clarified that the district may inform the union of positions it does not intend to fill prior to expedite posting process. There is a posting, expedited posting process within the custodial contract, basically it's a bumping meeting. And just clarified that the district may, there might be circumstances where the district doesn't intend to refill a certain position, so if somebody would bump out of that, we would, we would end that, that position, and the union agreed that they would end the bumping meeting at that point. In terms of language cleanup in general, we adjusted the years, of course, throughout the contract, we clarified the chain of command in the contract to read superintendent or designee throughout. We brought up to date some gender references throughout the contract. We also replaced the term night lead with lead throughout, and that, as we recently added a position in the custodial unit of grounds lead, and so it was no longer just a night lead as a possible lead position. So lead is now the term for that. And then finally, we replaced salary with wage throughout the contract, also since these are positions that are paid at an hourly rate. In terms of leadership stipend, we did have a leadership stipend language piece in this contract, we clarified that language, and really brought it in line with other contracts that we have in other areas of the district. In this case, specifically, the principal's contract has very similar language that we base this off of. One major change in terms of language, we added the ability to hire part-time temporary and/or seasonal assignments. What that means is that the, we can create positions and staff those positions that are part-time, temporary, and seasonal for no less than 14 hours a week and no more than 30 hours per week. And so we have some, some specific needs throughout the district that that will, hopefully will be able to leverage for everyone's benefit, that language. In terms of pay differential, we clarified that there's the second site requirements for head custodial pay differential, specifically that there's HVAC and boiler responsibility at the second site in order to qualify for that. In terms of probation dismissed on layoffs, we deleted language that was contradictory to board policy. So always being mindful that board policy supersedes contracts. We requested, the request for payroll deduction authorization remittance was clarified along the lines of updated state statute from 2023. And then in terms of retroactive pay, we put language in the contract that clarifies that retroactive pay, following settlement of a master agreement, is dispersed to current employees and those who retired in good standing prior to that successor agreement being ratified. In terms of vacation payout, we did have a request from the union to provide an opportunity for head or lead custodians to be reimbursed for some unused vacation time. Of course, we always want our employees to use all of their vacation time, but in those scenarios which they might not be able to, we did agree to, to a sellback of up to five vacation days once every two years for those positions. We modified vacation payout from a cash transaction to an HRA deposit, that's really of no consequence to the district, but it's beneficial to the employee, and so we wanted to make sure that we created that opportunity. And then also the last thing is we adjusted the work week in the custodial contract. The work week had previously been established from Monday through Sunday, and we brought this contract in alignment with others across the district to the norm of Sunday through Saturday. In all told, the total package value over the two years of the agreement is 9.19 based on the MSBA model, and I'm happy to take any questions that the board might have.
Any questions from the board? And board members, this is an action item.
I move to approve the custodial agreement as presented.
Second.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Mark Branson. All those in favor of approving the custodial and maintenance agreement as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The opposed, please say no. Motion passes 6-0. Please make sure you've cleaned up the cooks versus custodians.
You're not done with me yet, I'm up here for the next agenda item as well, Chair Zebra.
So we have first reading of policies, and we have policy 613 going to be presented this evening.
Actually, not presented this evening, it continues to linger on our first reading of practices as it has for the last couple of meetings. We are currently, we had brought it forward back in May or June as a first read, we need to make some modifications because it does pertain to school graduation requirements, and we'll be bringing that back to the board in August for finalization prior to the school year, the onset of the school year.
That should probably be the 19th, correct? Because board policy will meet on the 5th.
Policy will be on the 5th, and so we could, we'll work through it with policy, but we are at first read, we want to give the rest of the board time to review the finalized language as well.
We'll get it done before the school year starts, so. Any questions on policy 613 for Rob Daniker? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other announcements or comments from the board before we adjourn? Finding our agenda complete at the evening, we are adjourned at 7:20, and we will reconvene at 7:30 for our work session. Thank you, everyone.